During our last meeting, we circulated the list of upcoming conventions. And we're circulating the list again this time that we need a firm commitment to the National School Board Convention that's held in April. So if you sign up to attend the NSBA Convention in San Antonio, we will be charged for your registration fee and we may not be able to get that money back if you do not attend. So today, we need a firm commitment, yea or nay. So I'm going to pass this around. And the same thing actually goes for the NSBA Equity Symposium and the NSBA Advocacy Institute, and also for the annual conference in Williamsburg, which is going to be held November 15th through 17th in Williamsburg. So yes means that we will definitely send in a registration form for you. And especially with VSBA, I know for sure and certain, we do not get our money back. So if you say you're attending, we are out that money if you do not show. So I'm going to pass this, if you don't mind passing this around. Also, just as a reminder, in case you would like to sign up for benefits, the deadline for signing up for our school benefits, not just for us, but for teachers, for anybody who's watching, who might be an employee in our school system, the deadline is October 27th at 5:00 PM. So if you have not signed up and done your enrollment for benefits, you need to do so immediately.
That's Friday.
It's Friday, right. If you don't sign up this year, then you will not be covered. You cannot do it after 5:00 PM on the 27th of October. Also, I passed out the new cell tower lease corrections and the field trip correction forms. So I passed those around, just in case if you were wondering what that was about. And I have one more thing to say about our agenda. If there's no objection, what we would like to do this evening is move item 19 from our agenda, which is where we vote on remaining action items. We would like to move that to item 15 so that if we decide to vote on anything from our information as part of our action, and we had talked about possibly, especially when it comes to the resolution one, I believe, anyway, things that were on the information. We would like to be able, if we would like to later on, we would like to be able to move that to item 15 so that it could be, we could vote on it as part of our formal agenda, instead of waiting until after the meeting to vote on that. Is there any objection to that? Is all right? All right. So we'll be amending our agenda to do that. And so the other thing is, if there is, I don't want to cut everybody off as far as bringing things to the board, because I know this is the time we normally bring things informally to the board, but we have some guests this evening, and so we wanted to go ahead and start, and then we'll come back to if there's anybody who wants to bring something forward.
Just for clarification back on your point about bringing 19 to 15, I remember we talked about this in Agenda Planning last time. It's so, because we're actually included, so it'll be part of the formal meeting.
Yes.
So if we were to go, anything on the information, and she referred to it, is the reversion renewal, if we decided to move that from information to action?
Right, and there's a possibility-
Anything that was on the information that we wanted to, it will-
Right, there's a possibility of the bylaw that we're talking, that we're going to be talking about, bylaw 138, and it depends on, you know, how, if you all want to bring that as well, we could vote on that tonight as well. So that, because some people have said they really, really would like us to go ahead and make a decision on our calendar-
Yes.
-for next year.
Okay.
Okay? So those are the two things that we want to bring up forward and vote on while we have our formal meeting. So moving along, I would like to go ahead and start, since we have our guests, and I'd like to start with the WHRO update. Welcome, Mr. Schmidt and Mr. Callahan.
Madam Chair, Dr. Spence, members of the board, thank you for allowing us to speak with you again. My name is Dr. Schmidt, President and CEO of WHRO. Can you hear me okay?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, okay. And Chief Education Officer Brian Callahan is with me if you have any hard questions.
Yes.
He's the guy. So each year, we provide you an impact statement. I come out every other year, just to give you a quickie, five, 10-minute report, ask any questions you may have. So I'm going to refer to the report, I think you all have heard copies of the report that I'll refer to. And first off, on that first page one, I just want to highlight the leadership that comes from the beach, and boy, does leadership come from the beach. Joel's been your EAC rep, thank you very much for that. Now, I should mention, it's a very unusual circumstance, in fact, the station has never had it in our history, but for the first time, an active school board member is on the WHRO governing board. They're the ones that hire and fire me. Ashley McCall is on our governing board now, so-
Well, good report here, Mark.
So we're happy. It's the first time we've ever done that, but thank you for your work, because we really put you to work on the board. Of course, Dr. Spence, I should note also, he is the Chairman of the current Superintendent Advisory Committee with Coretta. So again, we put you to work a lot, so thank you, Dr. Spence, for your leadership. The other folks on the list, Rameshka Ford, Bill Johnson, Bruce Harrison, all these folks are great. In fact, I should mention James Paul as well. We actually have a regional virtual, regional virtual school working group, and both Bruce Harrison and James Paul are part of that group, helping us think through the whole concept of a regional virtual school. So amazing leadership, as we would expect from Virginia. So getting into the report, page two, our EMEVA system, this is the digital repository with over 125,000 or 140,000 learning objects. You have a direct connection through your Schoology LMS system, so it's direct, so all the content that we collect through national organizations like Smithsonian, National Archives, Library of Congress, as well as partnerships we have around the state for local great digital content, it's all merged into your system, and all your teachers have free access to all of this great information. We have a contract with the Department of Education, it's an $800,000 contract, a five-year contract, or a second or five years, providing this free to every public, private homeschooler in Virginia, have over 170,000 user accounts set up. We also do a lot of training around the state, if you ever need folks to have training, happy to come out here. We do a lot of special topic forums and professional development, and you'll see items two, three, and four, talked about those various professional development opportunities, and 34 of your teachers took advantage of that this past year. I'll also mention, we do, we're in the workforce development space, we have a website called skillsonline.org. We offer over 4,000 workforce development courses in 19 different industry sectors. We also offer workplace readiness modules free, and we will teach some of those soft skills that children need to be able to have, you know, the good skills you need to be a quality employee. We have a GED online preparatory course available, all through skillsonline.org. Page four, Student Services, as I think you all know, we've created for you 26 online high school courses now. The whole list is there, I won't go through the whole thing with you, but I should mention that you're using a lot of these courses, especially for summer school. I've got a two-page list, again, I won't go through the whole list with you once you want it, but you're doing a lot in the summer school space, as well as the full school year. We've made the courses, and then you can take them and modify them however you want. Think of us as the manufacturer, but you own the courses, and based on your strategic policies around online learning, you've got all these courses because of your relationship with WHRO. And I should mention also, you'll see on this page four, item number two, video courses. So our online courses are interactive experiences. If you want to learn about salinity, you're going to have a tub of water, and then a faucet, and a drain, and all these things you manipulate on the screen. Well, teachers also tell us that they like just the course. So have a teacher, maybe some whiteboard technology, and every class, if a child is homesick, or there's a snow day, or whatever's happened, the child can't be in the classroom, they can have literally a master teacher teaching that class. So we've done algebra, we've done geometry, and we're about to start earth science. So it's a different format, but it's nearly every course of, every lesson of those courses now available through EMEVA. Teachers, sometimes teachers may be not quite well-prepared to teach the course, they could use it, parents can use it, if they're trying to work with their kids on algebra, but boy, who remembers algebra? They can go watch the lecture, help the kids. So lots of ways to use these kind of tools. And so we're hearing from our superintendents regularly, and folks at the Department of Education, and creating this content to make sure it's available for you for free. Also, I'll just mention Virtual Virginia, item number three. WHRO's operated Virtual Virginia since day one. Last year, 593 of your students took the Virtual Virginia course. And there's been a full-time program for the last two years, where students who might not actually come into the building, it could be a homeschooler, or for whatever reason they may have been coming into the building, they now have a full-time online program through Virtual Virginia. The state leased from WHRO about 13 of our high school courses to round out the advanced placement of world language courses that they've had in the past. And you had 13 students who took the Virtual Virginia full-time program. I don't know the specifics, but they could have been homeschoolers, I don't know this for a fact here, but one of the things that's important is, in this scenario, a homeschooler who takes the Virtual Virginia full-time program, the ADM comes to you, because by definition, if you take a Virtual Virginia course, it's got to come through the division. So as opposed to some legislation that has been proposed, and has been vetoed by the governor, where virtual learning ultimately takes money away from the school division, this scenario, we've been able to work out with the Virtual Virginia scenario, brings ADM into the division. So we're happy about that, we're keeping eyes on what's going on in Richmond, as you might expect. Page six, Early Learner Services. We love to celebrate smart kids, and we do that in a number of ways. Item number two is our PBS Kids Writers Contest. You've had 74 entries last year, these are K-5 students. They write a story, they draw the story, we pick the winners, and we actually take those winners, we animate the story, we make a TV show out of it, their characters come to life, kids are thrilled, we have a little celebration at the station. Item three, the Spelling Bee, you had 10 schools involved in last year's Spelling Bee. We've been doing this now for 10 years, and you guys always have a great representation. And item number four, the Great Computer Challenge, which we've been doing for over 30 years, K through 12 students team up, compete in various software languages and programs, and you can see in the last few pages, all the firsts and seconds, and again, Virginia Beach does amazing work, and you can see all the great representation that you've had at the Great Computer Challenge. Some of you, 30 years ago, may have participated. Item number six, just very briefly, I'll just do it to embarrass him. The very last sentence in that paragraph talks about education now spots, and if you're a regular viewer of WHRO, you've seen Dr. Spence on our air, he's regularly on the air, talking about the advanced tech center, and hey, we get to show robots on our air, which is kind of a cool thing. So he's regularly a star on WHRO, we appreciate Dr. Spence doing that work. Skipping to page 10, Family and Early Learners. I won't go through all the details here, but we provide a lot of services for pre-K, K, per section, early learners. You can see the whole list, Beach is pretty good, I'm taking advantage of all these services. We have coding camps, we have two different vans come out, literacy van, a STEM van, we have library corners, reading buddies. And I know, as you are talking a lot about kindergarten, and half-day versus full-day, we are happy to partner with you to help through those transitions. We provide a lot of early learner services. The summary of it is on the end of page 12, but remember, WHRO does have that best on-air, online, and face-to-face when it comes to preschool. The children know these characters that are on WHRO. Finally, as school board members, what you care about is online. Page 13 is your ROI. You invest $2 per student each year with WHRO. Last year, you received value in savings of $983,000, a $6.55 to 1 ROI. Hope you like that one.
I like that one.
Don't know if your broker's doing that well, but we're happy to take any questions.
Any questions?
Well, I'll give a comment. WHRO PBS Kids was great for my children. They loved it and really accessed it often, so very pleased.
And I have a two-year-old granddaughter who is, who, people think that she's a genius right now, and it's all from WHRO.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Arnold giving us an update on Prince's and Middle School replacement.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Vice Chair Edwards, members of the board, Dr. Spence. Before I get started, I've got a couple of folks with us. First, in the way back, Alex Bergen, our customer, the principal at Prince's and Middle School, Dwayne Harbor, VP with RRMM Architects, and Rob Burrs, the project architect. Same team who, they've worked for us for a long time, they did the Renaissance Academy, and most recently, the Old Nation School. We've been telling the folks that we are in good hands, we've got able professionals here, and that's me. Just a little bit about Project Scope. We're obviously replacing the original Prince's and Middle School building. It's designed for 1,500 students, staff of about 122. The building is, the new building's about 253,000 square feet, sits on a site of about 24 acres, and the total project is just north of $78 million. There we go. There's the CIP detailed sheet that is, that's in the capital improvement program that you adopted and the council approved in May. About 35 million is currently funded in appropriations to date. We've got two more years of funding coming in fiscal years 18 and 19, where the balance of the $43 million will come from in the next two fiscal years. We've, we have been at what we call the programming and visioning, a couple of your board members, Ms. Ryan and Ms. Melnick have joined us for quite a few of the meetings. We started back in the, back in the fall. We've had, I think it's 18 formal visioning, programming meetings with our stakeholders. And again, that, you'll see some pictures, that's, you know, that's students, staff, community, you know, a broad cross-section, neighbors, you know, folks who live back in Foxfire, you know, so we've been at it for about 10 months. We're in the middle of design, see the schedule down at the bottom. If you've driven down Seaboard lately, you'll see that the building is coming down. RJ Smith, the demo contractor, is about a third of the way through the building, so you'll see the bulk of the building come down here in the next, probably the next month or so. You know, we'll do the cleanup and actually put, we'll put a sand pad back in, we'll show you a site plan that shows you where the building is going to go. The building is in a, the new building is in a similar location to where the current building sits, oriented much differently. But we'll finish, we'll finish up the demo early in 2018. We will advertise the project in the summer, next summer, so advertising and awarding will occur in the summer. Start construction about the beginning of the school year in 2018. You know, it takes, these buildings are more complicated today than they used to be. It takes about 30 months, 27 to 30 months to build a building of this size, so start construction in the fall of '15, finish in early 2021, move in, spring, summer. We like to under-promise and over-deliver in our business, so, you know, our story is that the students will be ready for school in September of 2021. We hope to do better. We were able to do that at Old Nation, where the staff and students moved in in April this past April. So that's where we are from a schedule perspective. And again, these, the next couple of slides are just pictures of what the visioning and educational programming, you know, I tell people all the time that, you know, the way we used to design, and these guys know this, we didn't talk to, you know, 30 years ago, we didn't do this. And we were built builds for growth. And so it takes longer, but I will tell you that the product is so much better, you know, when you listen to, listen to your stakeholders and you collaborative, you know, when you're, when you take a collaborative approach to programming and designing a building. And so it is, you know, it's a scary thought. A lot of great architects have control issues, okay? And so it's difficult to, you've got to be a great facilitator, and so it is truly, it's designed by a committee. And so, you know, I think you'll, you've seen that in the work that's been done over the past decade. You see that at ODS, and you'll certainly see that here, and you'll see that in a couple of weeks at Thurgood, and you'll continue to see that. You know, the buildings that are getting designed and built today are great places for teaching and learning, and they, and folks, they do not have to cost, okay, not if you're smart about how you go about delivering your product. All right, I'm going to ask Dwayne and Rob to come up and talk a little bit more in detail about the plans, and then we'll be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Good evening. Dr. Spence, Madam Chair, members of the board, it's great to be here and talk about this exciting project, and we're just very grateful to have the opportunity to be a part of it, a lot of fun. And I'm going to talk a little bit about the site to begin with, and then Rob Burrs, we'll talk about the building, and Rob is truly our leader for this project, so he's the one that knows the most about it. If you have questions, down there. Sorry, folks. Okay. So you can see from this view, it's kind of a mile-high view of the site, and it's embedded right in amongst the community there, Foxfire neighborhood to the south, and Prince's and Elementary School up to the north, more residential space over to the east side, and then there's a kind of a drain field that moves over through some forested area to West Net Creek, but only about a mile from here, so I'm sure you're very familiar with the site. So if we zoom in just a little bit more, along Seaboard Road, I'll kind of point out some of the issues we had when we first started the design of the project. There's a lot of traffic, as you know, along Seaboard, and access onto that from the school property was a challenge with buses and cars, all trying to get out directly onto Seaboard, and the intersections on each side of the site. School's very close up to Seaboard, and so we had to address that. There was also some drainage issues with the going across about midpoint of the site that we've looked at in our development. The neighborhood down to the south, next to the ball fields and play fields, certainly a factor, and they were part of this design process. So as we looked at this very much a community school, we tried to integrate as many of those concerns as we could. First thing we did was to get the main entrance to the school here off of Roy to the side, completely separated from bus traffic and off of Seaboard. Same thing on the other side of the site, you see the arrow for the bus loop, pulled it down off of Seaboard, plenty of distance to get away from that traffic and get into the site safely. That was very important to the staff to have that bus loop area close to where the three academic wings are, Rob will show you in plan, but those are those three elements to just adjacent to the bus loop. We did have that storm drainage going through the site at midpoint, and we've taken some opportunities to try to make a learning, external learning feature out of some of that, and you'll see that all across the site. The majority of the parking is up at the intersection of Seaboard and Roy, where we have reforested a lot of that, and I've got some landscaping amongst the parking area, that's the main parking space. And we preserved as many of those ball fields as possible all along the back edge of the site, and that was very important to the community. They did not want to have that building pulled right up against the edge of the residential area. So hopefully, we have satisfied a lot of those issues.
I guess I'll get over here where I can point to the screen a little bit. In those work sessions, some of the important things to the stakeholder groups were, high on the list, were flexibility of most importance, clear organization, when you, you know, an 11-year-old goes into a big school, they understand how to get around, distinct, distinct grade houses, that was very important, a lot of connectivity to the outside, which we'll talk about, and daylighting. And the hands-on type spaces are at the core, easily accessible by all the grade houses. So what I'll do to describe the layout is I'll walk through how somebody might enter the building, and we'll go through some of the spaces. So as Dwayne mentioned, our bus loop is over on the east side, and students that arrive by bus will come in to the end of their respective grade house. So a sixth grader is going to go into the sixth grade community, and so on. If they're dropped off, they would come in at the drop-off side. The main entrance for a visitor or a dropped-off student would be right here, and you could see the clear organization, and that was one of the first things that jumps out at you, is the clear organization of everything around this courtyard. But a visitor or a student dropped off would come in past the welcome center and move on around to their grade house, or if they have a zero bell class, they would come around to that. As you come around past the admin, you have your life skills, you've got your eighth-grade house, seventh-grade house, and sixth-grade house. You've got your dining down here with access to the play fields, your health and fitness with access to the play fields to the south. And as you continue on around, you've got your theater and your music. Your music wanted access to the drive because you've got a great program there, and they're constantly loading instruments into bands and playing in the area. And it continues on around to this exit, so you complete the circle under a covered red light. The way this is laid out, you've also got the ability to close this off, and after hours have theater and gym use of the school building, which is something that was important to the user group. So it really is truly a community space. You could also close it off here to include the dining in that, if you wanted to. So there's some flexibility there, there's some community use ability here. And as you see in the middle of the space, the hands-on STEM, CTE, art-type spaces equally accessible by all, and accessible to the courtyard for getting outside, doing experiments, making messes, et cetera. The courtyard itself, and we'll get to a close-up of that, is a place where we can, where it's a presentation space, a place to gather. The next slide, it's a, it's a two-story building, and the grade houses are pretty much the same on the second floor, circulation is pretty much the same. As you move on around, you've got your discovery center, which you might think of as a media center or a library, but this moves beyond that, as the program asks for. As you move on around, you can look over the dining below, you've got your teen living, and then you've got steps down to complete that circle to the upstairs. This is a blow-up of the seventh-grade house, just so you can get a sense of how it's organized, and this also shows you how the connections to the site, which is really important. Each grade house is 500 students, so one grade house of 500 students is split into two floors, each floor has 250 students, and it's made a cluster of 225 student teams. So you have three, four core classrooms where you have English, civics, math, and a science. You've got two clusters sharing floors, so it's a community. That seventh grade is a smaller community. Each floor has plenty of staff space for the staff on that floor in that wing, and each floor, for flexibility, has at least one set of classrooms where an operable partition will move off, move to the side, and you can get, let's say, a math and a science together, or English and a civics together for some co-teaching. You also have breakout spaces where smaller groups can get together. There's a lot of transparency in here, where good for observation, but it's also good for collaboration. And hallways are not hallways anymore. Every inch is, every square foot is student-centered and learning space, and so we've got niches in here for collaboration. In fact, we call these work zones, not necessarily halls or quarters, they're work zones. And you can see the connection to outside, there's a lot of access to outside for, it just expands what you can do in these, the staff and students, they want to be outside, and the weather allows it. You can see the connection to the courtyard here, presentation space, of access from dining, from the STEM, from the art, and lots of visual connections to that quarter. and lots of visual connections to that courtyard. This is what it looks like from Leroy, from the main entrance, your main entrance here. You can look into the courtyard, your after-hours entrance or that completion of the circle. And if from the bus loop, you've got entrances into the respective grade houses. And if you're looking at from the south and you're a bird flying by, you would see the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade wings. There's your circle. Here's your dining that has the patio up to the outside and, and your gym with access to the PE fields. And your service entrance here.
Green roof, too.
Can we go back? We did do a green roof on top of the kitchen as a one-story space. There's access from the second floor. It's great curriculum space. And we'll have a, a small display of a PB display for the kids to understand how it works. They can manipulate it and understand how it works. I love our new software. It allows us to do more photorealistic views. This is from Leroy looking down into the courtyard. Here's that covered walkway, your main entrance. And it gives you a feel of what it's gonna look like long before, you know, the first stone is laid. This is what it would look like from the bus loop, looking at the, the entrance where the, the kids would go in off the bus. And then the curriculum courtyard for that, between those two grade houses. Thank you very much. And can I answer any questions?
Can you go back to, go back to, put two spaces? Two slides. I'm not sure if that's stairs or a ramp. It's within the circle there, coming off the second floor, yes?
What you're looking at is the discovery center and a reading terrace off that with engagement downstairs down into that central courtyard.
Those are stairs, steps, okay.
Yes, so they do connect, connecting the second floor down to the courtyard.
Okay. And is there handicap accessibility for that as well?
Yes, right on the other side, right on the other side, the backside of the, the discovery center is an elevator that goes down. And you can come straight out that door.
Okay, thank you.
So how will the, the presentation was wonderful. How will the, the design of the security cameras be placed into this building?
We haven't, we're not there yet, but we work with the folks at Safe Schools. And they help us place exactly what they wanna cover. And I don't think there's an inch of old donation that you can't see on, on cameras. So I've been through that with them and they seem to do a really good job. We're not quite there yet.
Mr. Edwards?
Lockers, something similar to Kellum or what?
Yes, at this point, that's what we're showing. We can go back a couple of slides to the blow-up of the seventh grade wing. And the entrance to the communities have low lockers with work tops at the entrance to each of the communities on each of the floors. So they're not along the hallway. It's actually workspace. So some, not every kid choose to use lockers, so we don't wanna have lockers that are wasted space.
Ms. Melnick?
So this was thrilling to watch this unfold. It was great. And I loved the input from the kids. They really had a voice in this and I, I really appreciate that. Can you go to the last slide again? I just had a question about some of the outside building materials. So I did see some brick, right?
Yes, there's brick.
Good. And then, yes, I was so happy to see the brick. Thank you. But the view from Leroy Road, the front of the school? What, what is that? Oh, no, right where you were, one more. Uh, no, to, to the other way, sorry.
That's the front, that's the word.
There's a.
Okay, what is that material there? There you go. What is that material?
This is, this is a funnel panel. And it's, it's called Trespa is the brand name. Right now you have that on College Park and it's weathering really well. At College Park, it's a wood grain feel, very durable, lifetime material.
It'll be the same color as College Park?
Again, we're not quite there yet, but we need to go through our stakeholders and their, their colors. But this is a representation of what it might look like.
Ms. Manning?
Um, so Great Neck Middle School, which is gorgeous school, beautiful school, wonderful school. In 2012 was built for $46.5 million. Can you explain to me why we need $33 million more?
Sure. You know, Great Neck was at the absolute bottom of the market. And we turned, not turned back, but it was 17.5 million dollars under. And all 100% market-driven. And so what we did was that money went into Kellum and allowed us to start Kellum earlier. So the, the budget for Great Neck was on the order of 62 or 63. And it opened and went 2012. So that, that is a, that's a bid timeframe of 2009. So you, when you take the actual, the, the true marketplace and you, you look at inflation and one of my, one of the comments I was gonna talk about. You know, the, the days of us, we, we had a great run of about six or seven or eight years where we got a lot of building for really inexpensively. And those days are over. And we've seen it at DI. And so the cost of materials, we're, our, our commercial contractors are struggling. The labor force is, is really, really difficult. So we're, you know, we're starting to see where we're paying, we're paying more for materials. We're paying more for labor. You mix in storm events like we've had nationally. And so we're, the impact on the cost of.
But that's temporary.
I, I really think that, I think that this job will bid in the next, this one and Thurgood will bid in the next nine months. And you, we are not going to see a significant change in the cost of materials. You know, timber, PVC, you know, things that we take for granted. So we're, we are, quite frankly, we're concerned about the cost of materials in, in this marketplace for the, for the next year or two. So, you know, Great Neck was, Great Neck was the, was an absolute steal. It's by far one of.
How much of it is the design difference? Because this design looks fancy, much fancier than Great Neck Middle School. So how much of the cost is inflation and how much is it design difference?
You know, I, I say this all the time, that, that if you're smart about, if you're smart about how you use your materials and you're a, you're a competent owner who, who is, it's got a reputation in the marketplace for being fair with your contractors. That if you give a good architect $2 or $3 a square foot, they can do a lot with it. And so these guys did old donation school. This building is not the old donation school. It's better. But a lot of the materials are similar. And old donation was a building that was on the order of about $225 or $230 a square foot, which is extremely competitive in our marketplace. And it's a building that will, that, if you're running a business, which we are, will perform for its lifetime much more efficiently than buildings we built 10 or 15 years ago. We don't have, we don't have several years of utility bills under our belt. But at Kellum, which is a geothermally-driven system, very similar to old donation, Kellum is performing at 94 cents a square foot to heat and cool. And Greenburn High School performs at $2 a square foot. And so this building will be a geothermally-driven building. And so.
But so is Great Neck.
No, it's not.
Great Neck's not geothermal?
No.
What are those towers in the back?
They're cooling towers, yeah. You, when you have a geothermal system, you don't have those cooling towers. So it's not. Now, John B. DI, John B. DI is, we evaluated converting Great Neck while we were doing DI, doing DI, and it didn't make financial sense. That's one of the, when you build a building in the back, we could've come back, put a well field in. And truth be known, we wish we'd have done that. That's something we would've done differently at Great Neck, while, while materials were really inexpensive. But, you know, the, the mayor, the mayor talks about this being the greatest city in the world. And so, you know, we're believers in that we're gonna build you, design and build you the greatest school buildings in the world. And we're not gonna, we're not gonna do it where it costs any more than anybody else is doing. You know, we, we know how to build a box. We did that 30 years ago. You walk into the old donation school and what Rob talked about, there is not a place on that piece of property, inside or outside, that is not a great place for teaching and learning. It has been, for us as practitioners, it has been, my wife's a principal, it's been fascinating to watch, go, watch what goes on in that place each and every day. All right? And so the buildings that we're designing and building today, flexible is the key word. These buildings are gonna be here 100 years from now. They're not, they're flexible. They're designed to be able to be, to, to, to adjust over time. And they're efficient to run. And natural light, they're comfortable. They are, it's a great built environment.
Mr. Edwards?
Great Neck Middle School, by design, was called fancy when we built it. I mean, it was different. Different is perceived as fancy because it's less modern. Or it's more modern and, and different. Square footage differences between Great Neck Middle and proposed.
Great Neck, a 1,200-student school is 219. This one is 1,500 students, 2. We're hovering between 250 and we're fighting every square footage right now. So we're between 250 and 255.
Enrollment at Princess Sand Middle now?
September 30 enrollment was 1,505 and it's, it's flat.
We're building what we need.
Yeah.
Does it fit flat?
Can you take the numbers for each school again? I didn't. Great Neck Middle has 1,200 students?
Great Neck Middle is, was designed as a 1,200-student school. It's about 219,000 square feet.
Okay.
Okay, this building is designed for 1,500. It's, we're, we're about, we're between 250 and 255.
The major difference in the design, or a major difference though, is you don't have an auditorium at Great Neck Middle. So what's the square footage difference provided by, and I know it wasn't, I'm, I'm sorry, kinda sorry after the fact about Great Neck Middle, because I, I know the student community there is not filled by not having that. But that is a difference. And there, I would assume there's a significant square footage difference driven by that.
What do you estimate?
Six, 6,500 maybe, 4,000, so five, so somewhere in the.
Five, 6,000 feet.
Okay.
And it's a theater?
Yeah.
I love it.
Ms. Melnick?
That lovely courtyard. How big is the courtyard and how many students can access that at one time?
The diameter of it is about 230 feet. I don't know square footage right now, but it can hold the whole school in there if they want a whole school event. The center of the courtyard is, we designed the spaces, each of these gathering spaces for a grade. So 500 is the magic number. And cafeteria, we have a, a learning stair that can gather 500. The gym, obviously 500. The theater, 500. The courtyard, 500. But that's just in the center, so.
Ms. Felton? And then Ms. Ry. Ms. Felton?
No.
Oh, Ms. Ry and then.
Question and comment? Yes, the teacher, you, there was reference to each, staff space on each floor. So can you just elaborate a little on what that entails? And, and does that take the place of a single faculty, or is there still a, a, is this in place of the traditional faculty lounge?
Teacher, teacher work rooms are on, yeah, Rob, you were talking.
If we go back to the blow-up of that seventh grade house, on each floor of each grade house is staff that accommodates the 12 to 14 staff that work in this area. And so there's, because there's shared spaces here, you don't necessarily own a classroom. You've got workspace in here. It could also be professional development space, depending on how you wanna use it. There is not a traditional teacher's lounge, but there's plenty of space to do those types of things. We've got a, a space down here near the dining hall that's not programmed. Right now it's called the club hub. But, and it could be programmed for a teacher use if that's the way they wanna use it, somewhere near the dining area.
Cause I did raise that issue during the sessions and it's, so I appreciate knowing that. Cause one of the things pointed out to me from some of the old donation teachers is, as you said, they don't own their own classrooms anymore. So they need another place to, to productively put their free time to use.
If there's one thing at Kellum we could change, the, the teacher work rooms are too small.
Yeah.
So in that staff space, is there a place for teachers to have a personal space to put their purse? To put their personal belongings?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes, there'll be 12 to 14 workstations within that. And I guess if the staff goes over that, we might have to share some of those workstations. I don't think they'd all be there at the same time.
My follow-up comment, I was glad Mrs. Melnick referenced the children. And I wanted to just share what I had observed among the, the parents and other citizens at these sessions, just how seriously they took their task. And I saw it session after session. So a public thank you to them.
Thank you, Ms. Ry. Ms. Weems?
Yeah, I know the community and, and sports teams use our gyms a lot in the different schools to practice or have games and stuff. And with our newer schools having theaters, how much do you envision that the community is gonna be able to utilize and use that space? Is it gonna be for community meetings? Is it, you know, how much is that gonna have? And what it would be for, for the community?
They had a, at ODS the other night, they had a, they had a dialogue.
Screenagers?
Yeah, it's, it's a lot.
Okay.
I mean, you know, one of the things that we preach, you know, a, a school building is the center of the community.
Right, right.
And, you know, if you go out to, you go out there in the summer, during the fall, you know, the fields are continually in use.
Right, yeah.
And so, you know, the, the school, a school is more than a school. You know, it's, it's the gymnasium, the parks and recreation, the outdoor space, the auditorium. You know, I've, I've always felt like our libraries, you know, the learning commons, whatever we're gonna call it today. You know, I get in an argument with our folks about we can't let them in. I, I, I'm a believer in that it's, the school is the center of the community. And so we see more and more that, that these public buildings are used. You know, we don't, we don't, Kelly Hedrick tweeted out something on Friday night. They had an outdoor concert in the, in their outdoor auditorium. So you'll, you'll continue to see it.
I mean, I like that too, cause I mean, first of all, it's the taxpayer money. And, and we have such big schools to be able to get the community to really get in the school all the time. I love that idea. And I know it happens with athletics because I've been, you know, I practice at many schools. But I'm just hoping that the theaters are, are being as utilized. So I'm, I'm glad to hear that. We just need to let everybody know that the school is a welcoming place for, for a bunch of different stuff.
Let me, let me.
Thank you, Ms. Weems.
One other community use, okay? We've, we've seen a lot of, a lot of rain events, all right? We've talked about, we've been fortunate around here. We're a coastal community. Foxfire back here drains currently off of our front of the dock. There are pipes that run underneath the property now and drains over here, all right? And so we take that opportunity. We don't do the bare minimum required by ordinance. None of the builds we build nowadays do that in terms of the, the quantity of water and the quality of water. And, and so we will do that here. We'll partner with Public Works. We'll help improve the drainage situation in the neighborhoods. You know, we're talking to the city more about this, that when you have a public project, whether it's a rec center, a school, a road, a fire station, you take that opportunity to have multiple outcomes. And so we will help improve the overall drainage in the community and take our blinders off, create connections in the community while we're there.
That's what you do with ODC too?
Yes.
I mean, old, ODS, yeah.
Yeah, you know, and, and in spite of what you might hear every now and then, the drainage in and around that piece of property is, is a lot better than it used to be.
Oh, it's way better. Oh, the apartment complex next door used to complain all the time.
Thank you, Mr. Arnold.
I wanted to mention one other thing to you about your point about the community use. The design is set out very well for allowing the community to use part of the building without the whole rest of it.
I love that, yeah.
Right, that's nice.
So good, yeah.
Thank you.
That was early on, yeah.
Thank you very much. Next, I'm trying to move us along here. We have a closed session that we need to get to. So Mr. Edwards, if you will read us into close.
I move that the board adopt a motion to recess into a closed meeting pursuant to exemptions from the open meetings allowed by section 2.2, 3711, part eight, paragraphs one and seven of the Code of Virginia. 1950 is amended for A personnel matters. Discussion of or consideration of interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific. of specific public officers, appointees, or employees pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1, namely to discuss qualifications of a nominee for an appointed position. Two, legal matters, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the board or consultation with a legal counsel employed or retained by the board regarding specific legal matters, requiring the provisions of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A7, namely to discuss the qualifications of a nominee for an appointed position.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we go into close. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Okay, we are closed in a few minutes.